Sure seems to fit our needs, that type of system, so.
How about panic this week when I got the email with sixty-three pages?
I was gonna say, I panicked off sixty-three pages myself.
Probably mine was out of ink.
But is there anybody that, not everybody already have a tablet in some council?
I've got one.
No, Nick, not everybody has a tablet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is it, if we're considering doing this, would be able to include the departments? If departments want to participate in this also, we may be able to get a better, better price on these, for more than we bought, so, I know we've been considering shades of tablets also, but I, I think if we're buying this in the city, and not be my motivation is that we're gonna do these kinds of things, we do them as a city, not just, you know, department by department, so I'll just throw that out as a, you know, I certainly would be interested in participating in this if, if you felt that was appropriate.
Would you change it to collect the parking area, so you can, if you want to, all the books come in there?
Well, I mean, it's accorded the pricing that we've got, it's best buy in Walmart. I don't know how much negotiating quantity-wise they're gonna, gonna do. You know, it's a, it's a good thought, but I, I don't know if they're gonna.
Past experience with Walmart is if you can only buy three at a time.
Really?
And, uh, so we may end up having to, I mean, it's, they may make an exception for, I mean, that's valid.
I can go to Radio Shack and talk to Duller and see what kind of deal he can get us on, you know, settle.
Okay, we'll just place this in agenda next meeting, 'cause we can't have any action tonight anyway.
Is this something that can be bought from the state?
I don't know.
We could look and see if there's a state contract on those, but I do have to.
They heard you.
Sure.
I personally don't, I think, oh, but, I mean, I'm anti-apple, that's what I mean.
Is there anything else different that you all want Clark to check on? So we can have everything for you all? Nope? All right, let's move on. Out of any bids on repairing Fire Station Three and Annex Building?
The council approved single bids for repairs to Station Three and also the annex building behind it. We put an add in paper, we made several phone calls, because the response wasn't too good. Uh, we did get two bids. They're high, really high. The roof evidently according to two different roofing companies is in bad shape. There are both the bids, one is from Pyramid Roofing from Syxton, the other is from Quality Roofing from, uh, Sena. They're, both of them are pretty close to sixty thousand dollars, forty dollars. They pointed out several things to us that we weren't aware of in the condition of the roofs. Uh, they all did thorough inspections and again, they pointed out several things we hadn't seen in our condition. After talking to Councilman Matt Mahon today and Chief Malott is on a active duty guard grill, I talked to him several times today on the phone, and I agree with what he said. We would suggest that we break this down into smaller pieces. Uh, they bid three different bids in one. First was to do the metal part of Station Three, which is that front that you see. The back of that is a flat built-up roof, that was a price. And then there was a price given for the annex building or the GED building that was in the back. Pyramid Roofing did break theirs down where we could, break it down in pieces if council chooses to do so. The Fire Station Three metal roof is nineteen thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. They're calling this the storage building or the annex building, whatever we wanna name that in the back. To repair that roof is ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. To do the flat roof on Station Three, that's the bigger part of it, is twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. And what we came to a consensus on, I guess, today was to not do a formal full repair on that built-up roof, but they did give us a alternate to doing that. And for thirty-eight hundred dollars on the built-up part, they can put on a coating, aluminum roof coating, which is a temporary fix to it. And if we could get both of the metal roofs fixed and put that temporary coating on that, that would break that down into about half that, and then maybe next year we can budget for the rest of the roof, if council would do that.
How do you prefer?
Well, the flat roof's not leaking right now, start off, so, if it was leaking, it'd be a different issue.
Yeah.
But their actual.
What they, what they pointed out to us, I told you the more damage it is on that flat roof side, the metal on it, it's even almost gnawing places. But right now, again, it's like Councilman Matt Mahon said, it did not leak. And to answer your question, he didn't give me a warranty if it was a twelve-month coating or if there is a rating on it, if it's aluminum type coating, I assume something they're gonna brush or spray on.
If you've had dealt with flat roofs, you know, it makes it better normally.
If you've been to school, but you dealt with flat roofs.
You know, um, we're, we're trying to do this now, suggesting doing this, but I understand that in a year or two, we are gonna have to, to fix it right, so.
These were budgeted items, we do have money for this. We didn't wanna spend the full sixty thousand dollars, I think we budgeted seventy thousand, for building maintenance this year, considering all the other building projects we've got to do. Uh, if we do all that, we're gonna be finished. We've still got Station One to deal with, you guys have been here, you know, the problems with that. We're trying to get best prices on that, and we've even talked to another contractor to try to beat that other estimate on upgrading one, I won't talk about two different things, but, what I'm saying is if we can do a little this at a time, we can maybe get some of these done, because we need to get both of them fixed, and with the money we have, there's just no way we can do it under present budget.
So what are you requesting tonight?
I'm requesting that we go with Pyramid Roofing bid to, to finish, to fix the metal roof on Station Three for nineteen thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, to do the building in the rear for ten thousand, eight, seven, five, and to put the aluminum coating on the rest of Station Three for thirty-eight hundred dollars. I didn't, we were busy doing that ACS moving thing today, so I didn't have time just to total it up, with what the total of those three are, yes, sir. And they did break that out in their bid, with the exception. And then the Quality Roofing gave one price, they didn't break it down the way that Pyramid did, where we could take it smaller chunks of it out, going through the process of rebidding, and losing more, two or three more weeks' time for anything to.
Without rebidding, since we have a bid in, could, could we ask for a breakdown of that? From Quality? Just make sure we're not leaving anything on the table?
I don't know why we couldn't, but it's just as, at what we've got right now, I don't have those figures for that, because they didn't, you know, they didn't break it down.
But you know what I'm saying, if it, if we can save a little bit.
Even a thousand.
Just asking the question, if we save a thousand dollars, that, to me is well worth.
It, it may very well be, but it could, because they, there was a little bit of difference between the policy of both of them.
They might break it down.
We can't do anything to that Annex Building until we get the roof fixed. If any of you, I don't know if Chief Malott missed it last meeting, but if you take the time to go down there, that building has been leaking, that building was in really bad shape, worse than we did. We've gone in and basically gutted that building. We took three trailer loads of debris off the top of that building and hauled it off, and some, some spots on there are very, very weak, you know, I've been up there on it. And there's a lot of mildew in it, I think maybe we were, maybe we worked that out, it was mold, but I believe it's mildew. When they put that building together, they didn't design it right on the plumbing, they plunged the sewer pipe up into the attic, it didn't go out. So all that moisture was going into the attic all these years, and there is no attic vents in there. So whoever built that, built it for a quick office or whatever it was, and then they just, they didn't know much got built.
But it, don't you have some priority needs for that, as far as your office?
It was my understanding that we were to move out of this building and move into that, and so that's completely on hold, because we can't do anything until we get the roof fixed, and then we're like, going to completely remodel that like we did Station Three, on the way in, for. Either, I say we're gonna have to do it, or it's gonna actually hire someone to do it. I wasn't volunteering.
What's the wish of the council?
While it's good, contact Quality Roof, you need to break down the deal and compare it to, and see what comes up.
Your, your bid from Pyramid is, is, is good for about thirty days, probably?
I read through it, Mr. Mayor, today, and I did see a thirty, sixty day on here, on it. Did you notice it, Crystal, when you read over it? I, I didn't either, I, I received a bid from Crystal.
Did I just hear you say the chief didn't, whoever can't move out until this is done?
We can't, our offices are getting done.
So that's gonna hold up the police remodeling?
Yes, because the property maintenance guys are telling them, "Ain't a building, can't move this end of the building until they have these offices to move into."
It's two weeks, uh, the first falls on Tuesday, so we have two weeks to the next council meeting. October first. Uh, is there a motion, is that a motion, or is that?
I'm just suggesting, like, if we can turn this into a motion. Just go in and seek bids for Quality Roof.
Breakdown price?
Breakdown, break it down.
Whoever wants the cheapest, we can go in, and get their little doors, we can go in, we roughly know what kind of dollar amount we're looking at, and take that account.
Because of the, because of the published amount of these, this other bid on tonight, I think their breakdown has to be within the amount that they've already submitted. You shouldn't, I mean, this information becomes public here, and then they can jump in there and say, okay, we can underbid all those items by a little bit, which may or may not be right, but I don't think it'd be right. I think their breakdowns should come from what they've already submitted.
I, I see your point, yeah, they know what, they've seen all the cards on the table, so to speak. If you're talking about taking a thousand, that, that might be them, like that. And then, then should you give the others?
You're gonna be going back and forth, you'll be going back and forth to kind of outbid each other, 'cause they already know what that is bid, so.
It's up to you all, it could be first thing in the morning call, newspaper won't come out till later, they should have those figures broken down, whatever you all wanna do.
I'll be watching.
Do you have a total on all of it, from Quality, what's the rest of the track? So if they do give you a breakdown, wouldn't the breakdown have to match the total that they've already given you for the third?
I understand, it's kind of hard to cut, it's been pretty obvious.
Make a motion, we set Pyramid's bid.
I second that. I'll receive my motion.
That's like, you got one on.
I'll, I'll take my motion.
We have a motion now from Mr. Mahon.
Accept it with the recommendation that they just do the aluminum coating on the flat roof.
Okay, that's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Do you have a second? Do your discussion.
I just don't think it'd be fair if we do it the way that we're discussing it, because bids are already open, so.
And let me check, that's nineteen, ten, and thirty-eight hundred, right?
Nineteen thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five, thirty-eight hundred dollars for the aluminum coating on the built-up roof, that's, that's all.
Okay, more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, and just, if, and just remember that that building is in bad shape. So there's going to be other expenditures, putting walls back up, insulating it again, signaling to cause all that stuff had to be stripped out. Uh, one cleanup contractor suggests we go in there with Borax and wash everything down to get rid of that mildew. I mean, there's gonna be a lot more work and expense going on, and so I just want you guys to be aware of it.
Thank you. Oh, it's for City of, get in fleet department vehicles. Let's. I will open the bids that we received. It's from eight-twenty two thousand thirteen. Bids on vehicles. Two thousand three Jeep Cherokee, thirteen hundred dollars. Two thousand five Ford Crown Vic, twelve fifty. Two thousand seven Chevy Impala, fourteen hundred. So we have a little update, this, all of these vehicles running, vehicles, are they, how the commission are out?
The only one that, that's not running right now is the Jeep Cherokee, because that's the one that needs probably five hundred dollars, with, with cooling system work on it. It runs, but we weren't gonna put that money into that vehicle to repair the cooling system.
Okay. That was from John Nundry.
Think we use them one at a time, or we take them all together, or how we do it?
I don't know, I'm just gonna read if there's three vehicles involved, so I'll just, um, we'll read them all out, then we'll, see what we. The note on John Nundry says that we'll buy two out of the three vehicles that I have bidding on if I, probably, probably, probably I'm actually saying, if I am the highest bidder on that. Delta, salvage yard. Two thousand three Jeep, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. Two thousand seven Chevy Impala, eleven sixty-five. Two thousand five Ford Crown Vic, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. This one is from Bay Ridge Motors. Jeep Cherokee, two thousand three, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Two thousand seven Chevy Impala, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Two thousand five Ford Crown Vic, four hundred and eight dollars. That's all I have. There's total three bids, I'll make sure I don't have anything tied in.
Mr. Nundry only wants two of the three.
He only wants two of the three.
If he's the highest bid.
And he's the highest bidder?
Sound like we're gonna, actually, one of them's crap.
Well, they, they're not, they'll take one vehicle if they would, if they win, although they're accepting all three vehicles. They bidding for individual vehicles?
Well, that's, yes, sir, individual.
Well, give John Nundry the highest bid on two, which he wants even more.
He had the high on the Jeep and the Chevrolet, right?
On everything.
Well, but I mean, the other guy had, the eleven sixty-five was on what, the Crown Victoria?
Crown, uh, the Chevy Impala.
Chevy, Chevy, okay. Well, so if we, if we give Nundry the first two, and Delta the, the other one, we're only gonna lose a hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Nundry gets the O-five and the O-three, and Delta gets the O-seven.
Is there a motion to save any of these bids?
Motion.
Motion, what group?
Second.
A motion for Nundry to set which vehicles?
The first two, that'd be O-three.
The two thousand three Jeep, and the two thousand five.
Crown Vic.
Crown Vic.
And the O-seven Chevy to Delta.
The O-seven Chevy to Delta, for six hundred, hundred and seventy-five. Yes, sir.
All the money from these, from the sale of the police vehicles, does that money go back in the police department fund? Does it go back into the reserve fund, or does it go back into, in the?
It usually goes into general revenue, but you all can specify where you want it.
I think, well, I'm thinking, and I'm just throwing this thought out here, of all the extra expenses that the police department can put that money in the police department reserve, and they'll give them.
Let's clear this first motion on the floor, and then we can get into where you want to posit it. Okay, there is a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, I circled them. One bid. Okay, uh, would you care to bring up what you're wanting to do?
I'll make a motion if we take the proceeding from the sale of the cars and put it back in the police department reserve.
Second. There is a motion, and there is a second, no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Annexation of City of, annexation of the City of Kennet. Hopefully Annexes are ready to vote. Uh, this is discussion from the previous meeting, uh, I've got the map over there if we need to bring it out, but this is just the lines that are on the map. I ask for you all to consider it, think about it, see if you had any more thoughts, or wanna even pursue it.
Has this been before, Annex Station Committee?
No, sir, it has not, until, until we see, there's consensus among the council, I'm not asking for a vote, just consensus from the council, before we call that a vote.
You know, and thinking about it over the past two weeks, like, you think, go all the way to floodway ditch? Do you think somebody's gonna wanna buy or build out there when it's all in the floodplain? Given what the rules for the flood issues are now, you know? It, it may make our city limits a lot wider, but it's, uh, I can't feature anyone really wanting to put anything substantial out there that's in the floodplain.
That would be, it would be good to build it, to figure out that, well, we're just gonna bring it into the city, right? We're not gonna be wanting to build it.
So would you take on liability, is, is it a liability worth taking on if no one will ever build there? That'd be your point, right?
Yeah. You know, that, that's just the question. What value does it bring to the city by, by being a part of the city? If, if, we really would have to do a lot of, you gotta have a good salesman, go out there and sell that property and say, hey, you need to locate your business here in this floodplain, so. You know, and I'm only sad because, you know, there's been some major changes in the floodplain insurance industry right now, taking place, so, it would be a major concern for somebody, I think. And, and we're not gonna get anything with property tax, because we don't have, no longer have property tax.
That's right.
So, and that would say the same thing, that would go for everything south, too, so, but, I just wanna, wanna know, you know, what it does for.
The only concern, or only benefit, immediate concern, or immediate benefit with this is territory for the utility. You know, the utilities landlocked, and so, I mean, it might not benefit us today, but hopefully it will benefit our utility.
Yeah.
You know, you know, the state law, we can expand out past our city limits.
Right, right. And I, I agree with that, I agree with that aspect, though.
There is a single face line that runs out, parallel four twelve, um, it's Amherst UTE, and I, I would think that probably they would be open to negotiations of cutting that line and sell it to the city, I think, for pretty minimal cost. I haven't approached the utility board about it, I just, this is my thought, I want to.
You asked us to think about it, and so I can give you that up.
That's correct. Any other thoughts, or?
I would be interested to hear what, if you'd like, ask one of the things about it, before I make any decision on it, see if I'd like to get their input on it.
As far as the lines that we discussed, is that?
And, and, you know, issues of later on, say, if, I was blue, somebody did wanna put something out there, you know, what, what they would be looking at as far as moving utilities out there, you know?
I would have Ronnie in touch with utilities out there.
If it's voluntary annexation, we will not be required to do that. Now, obviously, the utility side, they wanted to supply the power for those residents out there, negotiate something with Amherst UTE, and I'm speaking out of term here, because the utility does not know about this, they would have to run a line somewhere close to it, but, you know, it's.
Wouldn't have to pursue, or?
Not if it's a voluntary annexation.
So what would be the benefit to them?
The only benefit.
City services, lower insurance rate.
That would be the biggest benefit for us, lower.
Or we have to get hydrant or something up there, or?
No.
That though?
We don't have it in the parent, uh, city limit right now.
Yeah, and I think, I think we need to hear from the fire department, and most people too, because my understanding that, that we would need, what, hydrants or something, out there, because, you know, for the lighting, 'cause, don't you send, send in miles?
Well, what is for us, for us to, I mean, for generally satisfied the lines that are drawn right now, we can turn this over to the Annex Committee, which involves fire, police, utility, involves all the players that we're discussing. But I just didn't wanna turn that over to them if we weren't behind or, or even thinking about going that direction. I don't wanna waste their time if we're not even considering it. I don't.
I certainly wanna look at the route going south, and I'd like to hear an idea of what benefits or risks there are going east as well.
Okay.
I'd like to hear the whole story.
Is that good with everyone else? Okay, we'll, we'll pass this to the Annex Station Committee now. Okay. New business, Mr. Risner is here this evening, and, uh, if you'd like to discuss the, the newly formed committee group within our city?
Diane Risner, I'm the resident of Ward Four, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight just to update everyone on the committee that is in the infancy stage of being formed. Uh, Kennet Community Awareness Committee is the name of it. They helped put on the meet the police at the park, and, um, what, what we're looking for is ways to make the community better. And one of these ways that has been brought out for suggestion is to try to have a landlord group, association, whatever word that that group chooses to use. But the idea behind it would be that if someone rented from Mr. Wilson and he left owing money, then Mr. McDowell perhaps would not want to rent to him. So there would need to be some sort of a central system keeping this information out there. Sharon Gargus is going to speak to the group, this will be Thursday night at six-thirty here in this room. Anyone's welcome to attend, but she is going to talk about how the housing authority cleaned up their area. Of course, Carter was mandated by Jimmy Clinton a long time ago, Jimmy Clinton, Jimmy Carter. Uh, so, anyway, that's, that's for y'all's benefit.
That's a combination there, sure.
Yeah, that was, that was a combination. One group that we're gonna be trying to work towards is also a crime stopper. And for those that may not be aware with that, if someone calls in, gives a tip, which leads to the conviction of an individual, there is a monetary reward. You know, some people might turn on their family, you never know. The other thing that is in the process is a neighborhood watch, not necessarily in Florida. We really don't wanna be, um, famous for any incident like that, but, um, to try to help the police have a little bit better handle on what the community as a whole is seeing. Like I said, this committee is in infancy stage, we do need some more members, and any of you gentlemen back here, be glad to have you join, and anyone else that might be interested in it. I'll try to answer any questions, but again, it's just in the beginning, so might have to get back to you if I can.
I mean, who do you all, not a city committee, I, or, you know?
Well, these are some ideas that the chief had when he came into town. And so in talking with different people, then this is how the committee has gotten formed, to try to help, help the police, um, in the community to be in better shape. Anything that's done has to help. Anything that's done has to help.
True.
Well, maybe, I wasn't, doesn't, but I just, I mean, I have some concerns, I guess, about the landlord, I'm not sure how much the city should be involved in landlord tenants.
The city really won't be, it's just...